Yeah, that's the way it is there. Do you know what my name is? Do you know what my name is? Probably be drawing, I always forget it. So, so the song and song.
I would like to welcome everyone to August 12th, 2024 regular meeting of the Eastern City Council. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation led by our wonderful Dr. Baron Bobb Pledge of Leaks. I would like to make mention for everyone to please mute or silence your phones to the duration of tonight's meeting.
Lord, thank you for letting us all come together here. We ask your wisdom for the God, for the blessed, for which I pray this season. In his name, the Lord, the Father, and the Son.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda, but we do have to make one small amendment. We will add number nine, which is the second reading of the Johnson annexation. Council, do you have anything else we need to add or take away? Okay, being a council, we have a motion to approve, to amend the agenda by adding number nine, the second reading of the Johnson annexation. We have a motion from Councilman Williams, who has a second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Sheffield, all in favor, show of hands? Motion carries on. All right, now the agenda has been amended. Do I now have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Motion from Councilman Sheffield, who has a second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Sheffield, all in favor, show of hands? Motion carries on. The next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the July 22nd, 2024 regular meeting and the minutes of the July 25th and 29th, 2024 special called meetings. I believe we all had those in our emails. Was there any other discussion that we needed to have in relation to those minutes? All right, being a council, we have a motion to approve the minutes from the July 22nd regular meeting and the minutes from the July 25th and 29th special called meetings. A motion from Councilman Williams, who has a second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Sheffield, all in favor, show of hands? Motion carries on. There being no business and unfinished business, we'll move on to new business. Item number one, the monthly fire report. Mr. Maxwell, sir, if you will, please step forward.
Fire report for this past minute. Had a total of one structural fire that was outside the city limits, one brush fire outside the city limits, one vehicle fire inside the city limits, one unauthorized burning inside the city. And there had its conditions, there were a total of three natural gas leaks, two in the city and one outside. Four trees in the roadway, all four were outside of the city limits. Vehicle calls and medical, we had a total of sixty-five. Fifty-six of those were in the city, nine were in the county. Twenty-one lived to city EMS, fourteen in the city, seven in the county. Three canceled and route, one in the city, two in the county. And ten motor vehicle accidents, seven inside the city and three outside. And public service, we have fourteen fire alarms, nine in the county, five in the city. Two smoke removals, one in the city, one in the county. Two investigation smokes, one in the city, one in the county. One landing zone standby in the city. Three public services in the city. And then one city assistance on blocking the roadway. We had a total of one hundred and thirty-three calls.
Yeah, do you have any questions for Chief Maxwell? Thank you, Chief Maxwell, sir. Thanks, sir. Next item on the agenda is the monthly police report. Chief Cooper.
Monthly police report for July. Used eleven hundred and seventy gallons of fuel. Hit you seven hundred and twenty-six calls, twenty-two traffic accidents. Trolled twelve thousand three hundred and six miles in the city. Took in twenty thousand and fifty-seven seventy in fines. And a total number of arrest citations, two fifty.
Counsel, do we have any questions for Chief Cooper? Thank you, Chief. Moving right along, as we've done over the last couple of months, we've had our different department heads come report as what's been going on each and every month. But you, the citizens of Eastern, can understand what is being done throughout our city. So, we'll start with Mr. White.
Due to the monthly fire report, four hundred and twenty dollars of vehicle permits, some dollars less from the special people, all this time. It was slow month as far as any of that, but we have been working extensively, extensively with the Department of Fresh and Department of Carcass. They will be on schedule, moving in on the nineteenth of this month. I have jobs already placed there. We've got lift scheduled for work and we've got to play pretty well more for them.
All right, so that project's going big again on the nineteenth of this month, great.
Yes, sir.
All right, and that, that project is slated to last roughly four months. All right, counsel, do we have any questions for Mr. White? Thank you, sir. Mr. Matt.
Could you turn off that microphone, please? I don't hear anything back here.
Okay.
Or ask them to call lower.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, starting with the water report, water pump from Wells. There was forty million, two hundred and five thousand gallons pump that averaged out to one point two nine seven million gallons daily. The water usage at the treatment plant was four hundred and thirteen thousand gallons for the month. And then at the wastewater at the treatment plant, the water that was treated for the month was thirteen million, two hundred and fifty thousand gallons, which averaged out to point four two seven million gallons per day. Going to kind of touch on some of the main things going on at the treatment plant or at the lift stations. We finally got our new H-back unit installed. Thank God.
Yeah, I was about to ask you, is it nice and cool in there?
It is nice and cold, but what's crazy, that old unit was worked, was still working, but it could have went out, you know, at any time. But I'm really thankful that we got that put in. Terry's kind of been over this project with industrial park lift stations, you know, that, that's going on. I would say they're probably a quarter of the way through with it.
Do you have a tentative timeframe as when that project is slated to be completed?
Like I say, they're probably a quarter of the way through. I mean, just with the way the weather's going.
They got a little bit behind their end.
Yeah, they hit limestone and if we try to make them hurry up, it would have cost us more. So, we let them go at their rate. So, I think, thank you. And then, the only other thing going on, we had kind of a major issue with our belt rest at the treatment plant. That's what we do order our sludge with. We had a, a part that was kind of obsolete, but luckily I was able to find the part. It was a company that we used and we got it at a very good price. And then Rodney were able to hook it up, wire it up, not have to use electrician or anything. Saved us probably several thousand dollars and it's working again.
Is this something we need to look at in the future? Or do we need to get some new kind of equipment that we need to look into?
Um, well, one person was going to tell us to get a whole new polymer unit. And if we'd done that, it was ten to fifteen thousand dollars. Instead, we just bought a new polymer spinning unit, it was only twenty-five. But I don't know if I can go and buy another one of those to have for ten years from now. I don't know. But I'm just glad we didn't have to buy the whole unit, you know?
And what are we doing? What are we still doing that?
Yeah, we, we sent it in the house and we're hoping till fair opens back up to Allen County because we were saving a lot of money by sending it in.
How long can we send it out? Once per month or?
Once a week. But for that whole month when we were down, we didn't send any. But like last week, we spent one. Hopefully this week, we're probably sending like two.
Oh, definitely have some pumps that we just purchased. Is that for the Chadmore? That are in the process of buying, yeah, for the Chadmore.
Yeah, I believe Terry said in October that should be in.
Y'all prefer to just take it to there where he's going to pay it.
It took like five to six months for them to turn around.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. I knew we made it, maybe we're going to make it. Motion to approve, I just wanted to know when the timeframe will be?
Yeah, for some reason, everything takes five months.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Matt? Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next, Mr. Pitten?
Should the public have a question for that person before we sit down? You normally ask, do the public have anything to say?
Okay, all right.
I think that's the format you've been using.
Well, the, the department has received a report, but if you want to ask a question, I'll allow. Go ahead, Mr. Battle. Mr. Matt, are you willing to take questions here?
Yes, sir.
I just would like to know what the usage of the water that's going down to the place for the services and all of that. What effect would it have if the customers who are receiving only water, not sewage, water? If their water was going down there, what would it affect the cost to the city then? Since we on the outside and not annexing?
I believe you have a sense of that, correct?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
There is none of that.
There's none of it. But so if we annex it in, what would be the process and procedure we getting in? We get the whole sewage, the whole system, all that for the customers outside? I think dogs kind of have probably about fifty-six, between fifty-six, hundred, six thousand, somewhat. Customers and outside customers that receiving just water. Not like the college.
We have about four hundred or something outside the city that's receiving water. Does that sound about right, man?
It, it, it's four hundred. That's, that's two hundred. That's right. Water and sewage, because you got in the city, the perimeter, you got certain section here, receive sewage and water, and then you got other section closer to the plant down there.
Our goal long term, and I'm just speaking as manager, not as council, though, is to get sewer into any area that wants.
Okay.
That's what we're working towards. But what we're having to do is want to figure out where the sewer is. How does it get over here but not over there? Some of this stuff was done twenty or thirty years ago. What's the first place we can build that system? Pump, if you want to take a lift station or just run it high. With the goal of anybody that wants to come into the city to get water and sewer and trash and pollution fire to make that place, it's just a multi-year process.
Right, and the reason I ask because the college sit probably five, six, seven mile? No, going down. And we sit right out here on the other side of Terry McCollum bypass. So, and they'll even get it. So, logical, it would make more sense to pipe it. That would be cost, low cost effect than piping it all over your different places. That's just something that brought it to my attention, that's bringing up to the city too.
Yes, sir. They help me as soon as I figure out how to pay for it, they're all for it.
That's right. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Battle. Thank you, Matt. When? Can you, can you hear me back, Miss Call?
Yes. Thank you.
Just want to make sure. All right, total meters in the system, this month started one eighty-one with only one of the one from last month. Total meters being built is averaging twenty-five, twenty-six hundred, just doing the cut on, the cutoff. Total meters not in the city limits, three thirty-seven. Total meters replaced by M and E, twenty-seven thirty-four. I did get word in the closeout meeting that we did come in under budget, but we have not got the final bill on that yet. There's some discretion right now in what was shipped and what was installed and what I decided to keep. We've just got to work some numbers out there, but either way, we're, we're under budget on that process, on that project. Fantastic. We installed two new water meters. Meters left, change out on the project was zero. We added pool, four meters. Water meters leaks repaired was seven. Work ordered answering with two of one. Water leaks detected was thirty-four. Water service line repaired was twenty-six. Major main break repaired was three. Cut ons was one fourteen, cut offs was a hundred and twenty-three. Speaking of which, everybody needs to know that tomorrow's cutoff day, so be prepared for, for cutoffs. If you're watching on Facebook, you have to eight o'clock in the morning to, to pay the bill or it will be cut off tomorrow if it's not paid. Locates, we actually have fifty of those. A lot of folks don't realize that, you know, the city beastman has to go out and mark the every locating utilities on water and sewer, which is on us. It's, you know, a lot of times that's a guesswork and it's not got tracing wire on it. I think one time before, there was a question on that, on that Terry Cotta pipe that was on, that we hit, the contractor hit. If it doesn't have a source of wire buried with it, we'd have nowhere to trace it. So, that's why like that line got hit. Because when it was buried in the forties and twenties, they didn't leave with stuff like that. Now, if it's a metal pipe, it's got, you know, we can trace, ended up peeping, and that's fine. But some of that, you know, PVC pipe that's in the ground, you, you can't, you can't locate it properly. Just wanted to give an update on that. Area of mulch, mulch, we did get over on Fourteenth Avenue and cleaned out all the covers over there. And there was one area that I needed to mulch to, to get the water flowing out under the road like it should. Brandon and his crew and all those joiners did some do that. Want to thank Brandon for helping us. Storm drains cleaned out on Fourteenth, this one was ten. We actually used seven hundred and fifty-four gallons of fuel. Zero private flat laddles, which we tried not to do any. Sewer investigations, eight, we actually cleaned sewer, eight sewer lines. We did not replace any lines this month. We did not add any sewer lines this month. On the lead copper project, I'm actually down to ninety-seven meters left identified out of twenty-eight hundred meters. So, we're on track to, to submit that prior to October.
So, no. Was that the cutoff date that we had?
October sixteenth is when I've got, have it in by. I anticipate that to get in throughout this month. No, no, no further than the middle of September, I have all them done and, and ready to submit. As, as y'all know, back over on Pine Drive, the INI sewer project is definitely underway. As of when I done this report, they had laid over a thousand feet of pipe and four manholes was installed. They've actually got, for homeowners up and down Pine, they're actually going to start tomorrow or Wednesday replacing all the driveways where it's cut down through. They got a local contractor coming in to pull the concrete back. Sometime midweek, we should be able to open a little Pine Drive because they took a right the day going down Eleventh. They did have to do a milling because the way the plans shows, that, that sewer line is running right down Eleventh. And as they get down past the, right at the Boys and Girls Club, it's going to beering off and cross under a gas line and get over next to our tennis courts. On that line, when they drew that up, whoever designed that actually drew that line under a gas line and I had to make a decision to pull it over on their property since it was city of Eastern property and just pull it to the right. Keep it running under that line. Therefore, apartment project that we, you know, took in that money for last month with the movers, they actually started moving theirs. If anybody's been out there and got their retention on, Doug, it's moving right along.
All right, now I know the I project, they're going to be jumping over to just pipe. Do you have a tentative date when they're going to start and just do this gas line that they just, you know, have to go under? And the problems we've got, we've actually got a guide wire, the dual power, we've got to get moved. It's slowed up right now and I was scared to tell you today. I do know the next plan is to hit the Rocky Springs Highway on that and come up from the lift station to come up is where to go into next. Up, up, not, uh, towards Forest Lake, is that it? Yes, sir.
That is the next area they're going to go up and then take a turn up Forest Lake or go to Congo. Depends on what's part of the deepest part of the line is. I know they've got to go up Ninth Avenue toward Forest first. Because we have to meet with the EMC and this guideline's moved. Once again, just things that's got to be done.
Counsel, do we have any other questions for Mr. Pitten? I think, appreciate all y'all's hard work. Mr. Briscoe?
Hey, one more question.
Sir?
I wanted to give a shout out to Mark Dustfield because of the valve down at KFC. It was leaking quite some time and him and I got to talking about it and he actually felt like that since we paid him as a city that back over a year ago to install that valve, that he wanted to take part responsibility. So, he sent his group of guys out and Mark Dustfield's crew and I together, and our crew, fixed the valve together. And I just want to tell Mark, but thank you.
Thank you.
With our street department, like we did not have no major projects we took on this month. Like I said, our charge shows are, we cut grass. Animal control, we had thirty-seven total hours of animal control. Curb and gutter, we had two hundred and fifty-eight man-hours. Ditches, we had fifty-four man-hours. Tree and limb cutting inside the road was twenty-three hours. Mole grass, six hundred and forty-five hours. Others than, on others, it could be anywhere, moving something in the office, heaven police department, I mean, that's what others is. Potholes, I had got with my guys that they did do two days worth of potholes, but they forgot to write it down on our paper and they couldn't remember when. So, I told them, I said, we got to do it better on that. Trash pickup, we had fifty-five, one five hours on trash pickup. And limb pick, the limb truck pickup, well, he worked one hundred and sixty-five total hours between two guys. And like I said, on, other than on our gas, I'm still trying to figure this thing out on the ga, on my gallons, how to figure it out, but I think it was four fifty-nine point nine oh five. And I'm still working, trying to figure out that part of it. But that's all we have.
Looks like a lot, especially in all this heat. You know, appreciate everything y'all do. Counsel, do we have any other questions? Briscoe?
This is Brandon did give us another this pothole thing. All right, we're going to get on those later.
And like I said, if y'all know anybody looking for a job, I mean, I'm down, actually two guys down, so I actually brought in another bridge this month and to get us by. But like I said, if anybody's looking for a job, don't talk to them.
I don't believe we can find you somebody. Thank you, Briscoe. All right, any others? Briscoe was the last. Moving right along, counsel, next item on the agenda is to approve the bills for July twenty-third through August of ninth, twenty twenty-four. I believe we had those in our emails. Was there anything we need to discuss in relation to the bills? There being none, counsel, we have a motion to approve the monthly bills from July twenty-third to August of ninth, twenty twenty-four. Motion, Councilman Sheffield, who has a second. Second, Councilman Williams, all in favor, show of hands? Motion carries on. The next item on the agenda is Mr. Mark Thorn. Is he in the audience? He is not, so we will move right along. The next item on the agenda is the bid for the Fourteenth Avenue Culver repair. Dr. Baron, if you will, please say it.
Yes. We got two bids back, one from Popco and another Graham's Test Field. Graham's Test Field came in at ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars. And then Popco came in at ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. Our actual budget for this project, though, was forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. After talking with the engineers involved, talking with women's citizens, his team, women believe they can step up and possibly have a listen house. But that would be my recommendation to counsel, you know, so that women's district, such as John Addy, coming in on the budget.
All right, Mr. Pitten, do you see anything wrong with that assessment?
No, sir, I asked the price of, um, all, all. I, I don't personally see a problem with it. I, I went through the, the plans on it and actually got the pricing on the pipe and the head walls, just one quote at the moment. And just the materials alone is going to be around seven and five. That's going to include grass in it or the rip route and time, fuel. We can definitely do it well under that.
Do you have an estimated timeframe of project completion from start to finish?
When I, if I start it and finish it, I have three days, four days at the max when to start and finish. But it's just a matter of time and getting it, getting everything in place that they can happen.
If you feel confident you've got the expertise to be able to handle it correctly, yeah, I'm, I'm. Good deal. Counsel, what are your feelings on this?
I know based on what Dr. Baron has, has explained to us, the bid we received was well over ninety-eight thousand dollars and the only money that we had based on G-DOT, I was going to supply us forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. So...
That is correct. I mean, what we can do in house, we can save taxpayer money, so.
Pay any doubt, I mean, you go to Boys and Girls Club, make sure, or pick a pipe that I laid up there last summer, it's only sixty.
And this, and it's, it's low and fine, correct? It's low and fine. Ms. Locke, does this require a motion for us to reject any bids that we received? Or we just need to?
We got, well, the bid itself said you can reject it because there's something foreign in the project. So, you can, you can make a motion to reject that, don't they?
All right, would that be a claim of wages?
It would.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Michelle. All right, counsel, based on those criteria, do I have a motion to approve the rejection of the bids we received from Popco and Graham's Test Field, both in excess of ninety-eight thousand dollars? I have a motion, Councilman Williams, who has a second.
Second.
A second, Councilman Sheffield, all in favor, show of hands? Motion carries on. And we will let Mr. Pitten and his team work on that job. The next item on the agenda is the intergovernmental agreement with the Dodge, with Dodge County in relation to the Congo Lane, Congo Lane Connector. Ms. Locke, you want to carry, take this one?
So, we had a, an authorization request that was on Congo Lane. And today, tonight is the second, Dodge County objected because of the cost of the maintenance of the roads. But agreed that if we took, if the city took control of the roadway, that they would withdraw their objection. So, I drafted the intergovernmental agreement dividing that Dodge County will convey the Congo Lane and Congo Lane Connector to the city of Eastern and withdraw its objection to the authorization. So, it has been signed by the county, they met today and they signed off on it. And I think it's a proper motion. We will, if we will within the next six months, get a flat of the property or a mapping of the road so that we can report it to the, to the office of the clerk, where all of the deeds are.
So, it has to have all the mixed bounds covered and documented.
And this agreement will also be filed in the clerk's office.
All right. Counsel, do we have any questions from the block in relation to the IDF of the county? All right, as usual, we try to leave this open, let everybody have opportunity to voice any questions or any concerns. Do we have any of those from the public? All right, there being none, counsel, we have a motion to approve the general governmental agreement with the county for, in relation to the Congo Lane and Congo Lane Connector. All right, the motion, Councilman Sheffield, who has a second. Second, Councilman Williams, all in favor, show of hands? Motion carries on. The next item on the agenda is to schedule a work session, counsel, I mean, y'all scheduled a live for next week, too. What, you said the twenty-first or twenty-second? Or twenty?
Twenty, uh, twenty-second. Oh, you can do the twenty-first.
No, I, I couldn't, I know you said the twenty-first, I couldn't. Sheffield, what do you say?
This will be actually the first day of our budget proposal for next year and review some project contracts.
That'd be, that'd be good. All right. What day do y'all have in mind, Ms. Williams? The twentieth or the twenty-second or what day? All right. Somebody flip a coin. Somebody flip a coin.
What day does Mark have his, his, his?
Let's do this here today, that was work session.
Okay, I think better.
I mean, we can do it at night, you know?
That's, I'm, I'm.
I figured it would pressure earlier in the day. Yeah. Yeah, y'all start at twelve and get into.
All right, there's day of twentieth, twenty-second, whatever day of the week. Is that already loaded? Tuesday, the twentieth. All right, twelve o'clock noon. All right, counsel, we have a motion to approve a work session for, uh, excuse me, August the twentieth at twelve PM here in the council chamber. All right, my motion, Councilman Williams, who has a second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Sheffield. Second, Councilman Sheffield, all in favor, Joe Hansen. Motion carries now. And the last item on the agenda and new business is the second reading of the Johnson annexation ordinance. Uh, Ms. Locke, anything else we need to discuss on that?
No, just so you know, final, uh, reading of the ordinance that the property will be annexed in, in, uh, R two A, R two A.
All right, Mr. White, do you see any issues with that?
No issues at all, sir.
Okay, all right. Any comments or questions from the public? There being none, council, we have a motion to approve the second reading of the Johnson annexation ordinance.
Sunday.
A motion from Councilman Sheffield, uh, second.
Second.
A second, Councilman Williams, all in favor, Joe Hansen. Motion carries now. All right, moving right along. Uh, next item on the agenda is the approval of business licenses. Uh, first one on the list is for the Eastern Bake Shop, uh, located at two oh eight Ninety Street, for the serving of beer and wine. Uh, Baron, do we see any issues with this?
No issues at all. They submitted the appropriate fee, that paperwork, and I believe, uh, Jack has done the appropriate measurements.
Mr. White, you good with that? All right, Ms. Locke, do you foresee any issues?
No.
Okay. Any questions from the public? All right, there being none, council, we have a motion to approve the serving of beer and wine license of the Eastern Bake Shop located at two oh eight Main Street. A motion from Councilman Sheffield, excuse me, Williams, uh, second.
Second.
A second from Councilman Sheffield, all in favor, Joe Hansen. Motion carries now. All right, next on the list, Hot Diggity Dollars LLC located at two twenty-five Main Street, also to serve beer and wine.
Yes, they submitted the appropriate paperwork, fee, and, uh, Jack White, they also did right there.
Yes, all of this is approved.
All right, once again, Locke, do you foresee any issues?
I think that Jack has approved the location.
And, Mr. White, you said you were good, correct?
Yes.
All right. Once again, any comments from the public? All right, there being none, council, we have a motion to approve the beer and wine license request for Hot Diggity Dollars LLC located at two twenty-five Main Street. All right, a motion from Councilman, uh, Sheffield, uh, second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Williams, all in favor, Joe Hansen. Motion carries now. And the last, uh, licenses for refuse.
Yes, sir.
Uh, located at five fifty, uh, excuse me, five forty-one Pine Haven Drive, this is for a home occupation license to paint, clean, renew outdoor areas. Would you like to come up and elaborate on it or not?
Yes, yes, sir, absolutely.
All means, please step forward. Mr. Dever, is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Dever, but I'm always part of the panel. Can everyone hear me back there? Um, so, my name is Jake Dever. Uh, I happen to be a college student at Middle Florida State University. And I'm someone who love giving back to the community. And for the past three years, you guys have given me a great education. You know, it's been a great place to live and I love giving back. Uh, I always like to rep at the rec center. And I started to notice that places like the rec center, and I have multiple voters around town. If you guys would like proof, no worries if you don't. Uh, places that need new parking lot lines, and especially places like the rec center, pediatric center, the girls, the girls and boys club. Um, you have kids walking around and there's no lines of directional flow of traffic and things like that. And, you know, I'm, I'm not asking for a lot of additional money. I just, you know, to help pay for the supplies. But I love to repaint lines, repaint parking lots, and really kind of help around town with the different places uh, that might need new parking lot line painting. And then also if you need additional work, a little bit of pressure washing, you know, on a single person running a single business. So, not like a Walmart parking lot or anything like that, but especially for the small businesses and anything that the city needs, I love to give back to the community.
Will you be coordinating with different business owners in relation to?
Absolutely. So, what I was gonna do is if I do get approved, and I didn't want to, definitely goes, I want to go through the city first. Is, you know, I talked to different business owners, uh, see if they would like, you know, things to be painted. Um, if it's a private, uh, I talked, I talked, um, uh, with someone at the front desk and they said, if the city owns it, I have to go through the city first. If it is a privately owned business, a privately owned land, then I just talk to their manager and see if they want it fixed, painted, anything like that. Um, and it'll just be case by case basis.
Okay. Uh, council, do we have any questions from Mr. Dever? Thank you, sir.
Thanks so much.
Uh, Dr. Baron, do you foresee any issues?
We always have somebody paying some, so that's fine.
All right, Ms. Locke, everything good?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any comments or questions from the public? All right, there being none, council, we have a motion to approve the home occupation license to paint, clean, renew outdoor areas for refuse located at five forty-one Pine Haven Drive. A motion from Councilman Sheffield, uh, second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Williams, all in favor, Joe Hansen. Motion carries now. I hope you have some business cards so you can hand them out.
I do, yes, sir.
All right, good. Thank you, Mr. Dever. All right, and last on the, uh, agenda, soon as reported.
Uh, just to echo what Wendy said, the bar is cutoff day, so please make a payment just as soon as you can. We remind you, we do take credit card payments inside the building now or online if that's what they report. The other thing, please go to the Leave It Better Facebook page and vote for, you could, you vote a grant, it's up to fifty thousand dollars, I believe, if I'm correct there. If they do that, that'll be a win for the city, but it'll also go to ward, cut down the papers, the park, and whatever other programs they're trying to do. Go to the Leave It Better Facebook page, they have a link on the city Facebook page. Okay, we do. And vote for the city of Eastman.
I know that as of today, I think they're up somewhere five hundred plus votes to the positive, so that's fantastic support for the community.
It's five hundred eleven, if I'm not mistaken.
Five hundred eleven.
They're up against the University of Georgia and they posted it on their two hundred thousand plus, um, alumni email blast today. So, we have today, tomorrow, and Wednesday, and then it's over.
That is correct.
Every email they got.
Yes, sir.
Every day. Every day, vote every day.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
They also put it in an agricultural nationwide newsletter last week.
Like I said, you know, every vote counts, so let's get out there and vote and try to help Leave It Better and their park condition. Anthony Gales, Dr. Baron, no, sir.
Can I just?
Comments from the council?
I just want to say that, um, they don't have to live here in Eastman, they don't have to live in Georgia. We've got family in Florida that are voting every day.
No, they go through the website, the voter link.
They go through the website, they go back to Georgia. So, any family you have, friends you have somewhere else, they can go on the website and, and vote.
Thank you, Mr. White. All right. Next on the agenda, other business from the council. Start with Ms. Sheffield. All right, Ms. Williams. I have none either, other than it's hot outside, everybody stay hydrated. You know, let's get through this, uh, through the doll day of summer. There being no further business, council, we have a motion to adjourn. Motion, uh, motion from Councilman Williams, uh, second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Sheffield, all in favor, show hands. Motion carries now. Meeting adjourned.